This conference will now be recorded.
I hear you now. I can hear. I think Mr. Drury just joined us.
This is Danielle, can you hear me?
Yes.
I hear you, Ms. Powell here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Tim Calhoun's on line.
Good evening.
I'm Ms. Little, how are you?
I'm great.
Good evening, Ms. Elliott, how are you?
Doing good, Ms. Calhoun, good to hear from you.
You as well.
No one wants to show their face, I'm the only one showing their face.
Well, I told you, Mr. Elliott, you wouldn't recognize me, I'd look like one of the ZZ Top band members with the long hair, I just want to have the big beard hanging down.
That'd be worth seeing.
Yeah, let us see, before you shave it.
No ma'am, no ma'am, no ma'am. I almost have a ponytail in the back.
Oh, okay, that's all right.
Is Pastor Blunt on the line? There's somebody, I can see, Ms. Harrington. Is Pastor Blunt here?
Yes, sir, Pastor Elliott, I am here.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
There you go, Ms. Little, I see you now.
I told you, I'm still trying to find out how to operate.
I got you now.
Alrighty.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the hour prior for us to call to order on the business meeting of the Board of Supervisors for the County of Surrey, Virginia. And at this time, we're going to ask our League of Representatives, Ms. Powell, if she would give us our open statement regarding our virtual meeting.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This meeting is being held electronically due to the COVID-19 pandemic, which has made it unsafe to assemble a quorum in a single location. This meeting is convening by go-to meetings as posted on the county's website. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. At this time, we are elated that we have the esteemed pastor of the St. Paul's Holiness Church in Denver, Virginia, up Surrey County, Pastor Welton Blunt. We're going to ask and call on him now to lead us in our invocation and prayer.
Thank you, and good evening Chairman Elliott and members of the Board of Supervisor. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we are thankful for our board that is here this evening to conduct matters of business for the County of Surrey. We ask that you guide heart and mind in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. Continue to be with our supervisors through their deliberations and help them to be wise in their decision-making for the good of all of us who have placed our trust and confidence in their leadership. We ask that you impart your supreme wisdom upon all who serve and will conduct activities and affairs in the order that they may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source today and always. Amen.
Yes.
Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Amen. Amen. Thank you Pastor Blunt for our invocation. And at this time, we'll call for a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask if our Vice Chair, our Co-Chair, Vice Chair, Mr. Drury, if he would lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Elliott. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. At this time, Board members, you have before you the agenda for our meeting on tonight. There is one request for an amendment to our agenda, and that is, there is a presentation that we would like to have tonight given to us from Dominion Virginia Power in regards to broadband access in the county, in regards to the easements that is necessary to continue their project. They're planning a presentation, so we would like to add that to the agenda. Can I get a motion to accept and add this to the agenda before we accept the entire...
So moved, I make the motion, Mike Drury.
Can't hear Mr. Drury, I mean, Mr. Elliott.
We need a motion to amend the agenda for Dominion Power to make the presentation.
Mr. Chair, Mike Drury. Can you hear me? If he, if he lost, a fight like this is just, it's just pathetic.
As he was talking, I was trying to reach out to him, he had a problem with his gas.
Did you all hear me? Ms. Calhoun?
Robyn Elliott, Mr. Chairman Elliott can't hear you.
Can I have a second?
Second, I second the motion, Judy. Second the motion. Mr. Elliott is continually going out. I don't hear him.
Probably moving, Mr. Elliott.
Yeah.
Get a roll call vote on the amendment of just Ms. Chapman.
Roll call vote, Mr. Elliott? Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
I didn't see Mr. Holmes on, but just in case, Mr. Holmes.
I do, Mr. Drury.
Okay, and Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is Melissa Rawlins. Mr. Elliott is going to dial in because of the audio/video issues, and he's dialing back in via phone. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Also, while we're waiting, this is Delon Brown from Department of Information Technology. We're asking all callers, if you are not presenting or on the Board of Supervisors or are called upon, please mute your lines so that we can have a pretty straightforward meeting. If you're, if you're presenting, at that point, you can then unmute yourself and begin with your presentation. Thank you.
Can you all hear me now?
Yes.
All right, all right. Thank you for your patience. We are ready to move forward. We did, did have a, an adoption amendment to our agenda for tonight. Now, at this time, could we get an approval for the agenda for our meeting on tonight? Roll call vote, Ms. Chapman.
Yes, sir, roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, motion is carried. Our Board members, you have before you consent items. Item number one is the draft minutes from our October meeting, also account payable report from approved from November payables in the amount of $431,521.65. Our public hearing request procurement code change, small business policy, also our facility use agreement with the Surrey Volunteer Rescue Squad, our school board, budget amendment request, and sale of surplus property. Also, on the consent items is a resolution for donated land acceptance, and we're going to have a presentation on that from Mr. Hefty, and also Senior Resolution 2020-20 from Ms. Olga Tree Godfrey, and a presentation on that resolution will be given by Mr. Calhoun. Then we have a staff resolution 2020-21 for Ms. Virginia Gary. A presentation will be given by Ms. Pierce or Mrs. Rawlins. Those are the consent items before us this evening. Could I get a motion to accept the consent items?
So moved.
So moved.
Can I properly, have, can I get a second? We have a little motion.
Second, Mr. Elliott, Tim Calhoun.
It's been properly moved, a second. Can we get a roll call vote on the consent item? Ms. Chapman?
Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little? Mr. Calhoun?
Yes, yeah, Mrs. Chapman is kind of going in and out too.
Motion is carried. At this time, we will ask Mr. Bill Hefty if he would join us with the resolution, resolution of the donated land acceptance.
Let me unmute. The donated land was on the consent agenda, so it's been approved. Ms. Powell worked on that, and do you want to make any comments about that, Danielle?
Sure, yes. Mr. Chairman members of the board, the resolution is there for the board to accept a property that was donated to the county by Mr. Ronald. He offered to donate that property earlier this year. It's approximately .139 acre. Again, as Mr. Hefty said, the board has already accepted the donation of the property, but if you have any additional questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. If there are no additional questions from the board, we move to number eight. Mr. Calhoun, are you prepared to read the resolution for Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes, sir, I'll pull it up and read it, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me. Resolution 2020-20, senior resignation for Mrs. Godfrey, whereas Mrs. Godfrey, a resident of Surrey District of Surrey, Virginia, of 45 years, was born on May 20, 1930, and obtained the age of 90 years on May 20, 1920, and whereas Mrs. Godfrey was dedicated wife to Mr. Moses Godfrey and loving mother to Mrs. Howell Purcell Godfrey, and whereas Mrs. Godfrey attended high school at A.B. Davis High School in Mount Vernon, New York, and went on to attend college at West Virginia State University Institute, West Virginia, and whereas Mrs. Godfrey earned a secretary certification by being employed by the YMCA in Tuscaloosa, Alabama, in 1956, and in 1965, moved to Mount Vernon, New York, becoming employed as a medical social worker, and in 1985, returned to Surrey County during which time she served the Suffolk, Virginia community as a medical social worker before retiring in 1995. And whereas Mrs. Godfrey has been longstanding and faithful member of Mount Nevo Baptist Church of Surrey County for 30 years, and whereas Mrs. Godfrey has been a member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated for the past 30 years in her current chapter with a total of 50 years cumulative, and whereas Mrs. Godfrey has many hobbies such as knitting, beating, water fitness, gardening, and bird watching, and whereas the Board of Supervisors of Surrey County wishes to recognize this milestone in Mrs. Godfrey's life and many contributions that she has made to help make Surrey County a better place for all of its citizens through her active participation in her community and in the affairs of the county, now therefore be resolved, I'm sorry, excuse me, now therefore be it resolved that the Surrey County Board of Supervisors hereby extends its heartfelt appreciation to Mrs. Godfrey for her endeavors aimed at improving the quality of life for the citizens of the county, and to celebrate Mrs. Godfrey for having reached the 90th year of life, and be it further resolved that the original of this resolution be delivered forthwith to Mrs. Godfrey, and that a copy of it be spread upon the records of the Surrey County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you so much, Mr. Calhoun. We salute Mrs. Godfrey on tonight. If someone reaches this ripe age, I think it is noteworthy for us just to read the resolution. It is, it is well received and well deserved. So I thank you, Mr. Calhoun, and we do salute Ms. Godfrey on tonight. Also, we have a staff resolution for Ms. Virginia Gary. Is Ms. Pierce on the line?
Yes, I'm here. Chairman Elliott, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Right. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mrs. Melissa Rawlins, and all those who are attending virtually, good evening. I am delighted to come before you tonight to read this resolution on behalf of Mrs. Virginia Brown Gary, and it reads, Resolution 2020-21. A resolution recognizing Mrs. Virginia B. Gary for 45 years of consecutive service to Surrey County Department of Social Services. Whereas Virginia B. Gary walked into the office of Surrey County Department of Social Services in early September, 1975, to seek assistance upon being laid off from her employment with Luton Smithville, Virginia, and her husband being laid off from Newpernou Shipbuilding at the same time, later returned to the office the same month as an employee, which commenced on September 24, 1975. And whereas Virginia B. Gary is actively involved in her church, Lebanon Baptist Church, where she serves as a dignus and has been a financial clerk for 20 years, is a member of the Tyewater Clerical League of Social Services, an organization recognized by the Virginia Department of Social Services, where she has served as a treasurer for over 30 years, has been recognized by the auditors with the Virginia Department of Social Services for financial records that were 100% error-free, and whereas Virginia B. Gary began her employment as a junior clerk with Surrey County Department of Social Services on September 24, 1975, and over the course of 45 years, has been promoted to the following positions, clerk, senior clerk, office assistant, clerical supervisor, office manager, and her current position as administrative services manager, where she supervises three employees, has served under the administration of three directors with the Surrey County Department of Social Services, Carol Thompson, Linda Lewis, and Valerie Pierce, and stated that there would not be a fourth. Whereas Virginia B. Gary is a graduate of Luther Porter Jackson High School, the class of 1971, attended Norfolk State University in the nursing program, but later changed her major to accounting, has been a lifelong resident of Surrey County along with her husband of 47 years, James Jr., and is the mother of two children, Patrice and James III, the grandmother to six grandchildren. Said that her work ethics comes from her parents, but particularly her father, who was employed by Luton Smithville, Virginia for 30 consecutive years and never missed a day from work. And whereas the Board of Supervisors of Surrey County wishes to recognize this milestone of 45 years of consecutive service as an employee of Surrey County Department of Social Services in Virginia Gary's life, and the many contributions that she has made to help make Surrey County a better place for all citizens through her active participation in the affairs of the county, now for, now therefore be it resolved that the Surrey County Board of Supervisors hereby extend its heartfelt appreciation to Virginia B. Gary for her endeavors aimed at improving the quality of life for the citizen of Surrey County, and Virginia B. Gary for having reached the 45 years of service, and be it further resolved that the original of this resolution be delivered forthwith to Virginia B. Gary, and that a copy of it spread upon the records of the Surrey County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you so much, Ms. Pierce. Ms. Gary, we do salute you tonight. Thank you so much for 45 years of dedicated service to the County of Surrey. Thank you so much. Thank you. Now, Board members, we move into new business. First item on new business is Resolution 2020-22, an amendment, zoning text amendment, and we ask Mr. Hefty if he would come and lead the discussion on this.
Mr. Chairman, again, Ms. Powell has worked on this, and I would ask that she deal with this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Hefty. Ms. Powell, thank you, would you come and lead us now?
Yes, good evening again. Before you is a resolution to amend the zoning ordinance. Due to recent legislation, the county is now able to adopt regulations for granting conditional use permits for solar projects, and as a part of that ordinance, or as part of that new legislation, the county is now able to accept the dedication of real property of substantial value or cash payment, subject to certain limitations that's provided in state code. So the resolution, if it is adopted by the board, directs the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing to consider that amendment to the zoning ordinance. And once the Planning Commission makes its decision of whether to recommend adoption or denial, then it would come back to the Board of Supervisors for a public hearing as well. The suggested language to the ordinance will be found on page two of the resolution. So the recommended action is that the board adopt this resolution to direct the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing and consider an amendment to the county zoning ordinance, giving the county authority to accept cash or property to mitigate potential impacts of solar projects within the county. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Board members, are there any questions for Ms. Powell in regards to Resolution 2020-22?
Mr. Chair, Mike Drury?
Yes, Mr. Drury.
I've just got a question for Ms. Powell, and I'm okay with the ordinance, but where, where was the solar, where is the solar ordinance? Is it within the zoning code, or where is it?
It shouldn't be a part of the zoning ordinance. It was adopted separately, but it should be a part of the zoning ordinance.
Well, this, I couldn't tell from this, with this Article 1, Section 1-518, is this going to be a part of that ordinance, or is it a standalone somewhere?
It's actually in the, it's in the county's zoning ordinance that's on MUNI code. So the solar ordinance that you're referring to, that the board adopted a couple of years ago, is brought to my attention, and it's not made its way to MUNI code yet, and so I've talked with staff about that, and we're working on getting that on MUNI code as well.
There was.
So you, you won't see it online, if that's what you're asking?
Yeah, I had looked for it and didn't see it, that's the reason I was asking, and thank you.
Yes, we're working on getting that updated in MUNI code.
Thanks, and that's all the questions, Danielle.
Are there any other questions from Board members for Ms. Powell? If not, we'll be the pleasure of the board on the recommendation for the adoption of Resolution 2020-22 to direct the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing to consider an amendment to the county zoning ordinance for solar power.
Mike Drury, so moved.
Have a motion, can I have a second?
Tim Calhoun, second.
It has been properly moved, a second. Can we have a roll call vote, Ms. Chapman?
Yes, sir, roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
It is, it's been, the motion is carried. Thank you, Mrs. Chapman. The second item on new business is oversea healthcare found... The second item on new business is oversea healthcare foundation grant, three hundred thousand dollar award for local market. At this time, we're going to ask Mr. David Harrison if he would come for discussion on this item. Are you there, Mr. Harrison?
Yes, sir. Chairman Elliott, members of the board, Ms. Rollins, everyone assembled. Yeah, I will be speaking to you briefly regarding the agenda note regarding the oversea healthcare foundation's local market grant recently awarded to Surrey County. Realizing that the lack of continued access to healthy food will adversely impact the overall health and well-being of our community, we are extremely appreciative of the recent three hundred thousand healthy behaviors grant award from the oversea healthcare foundation for the establishment of a local market in Surrey County. The time in which we are no longer identified as a food desert county is closer to becoming a reality thanks to the partnership of the oversea healthcare foundation, the industrious efforts of county staff, the collaboration with town of Surrey officials, and the support of the Surrey County Board of Supervisors. To this extent, staff respectfully requests that the Surrey County Board of Supervisors accept the grant from the oversea healthcare foundation in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars for the establishment of a permanent local market in the town of Surrey and commit matching funds to support this initiative through local county dollars utilizing contractual agreements for the establishment of the market with similar per-year funding structures as proposed by the oversea foundation for this grant award. Again, requested action is to accept the oversea healthcare foundation local market grant in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars and commit matching local dollars for the establishment of a permanent local market in the town of Surrey, Surrey County, Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Board members, are there any questions of Mr. Harrison in regards to this item on new business?
Mr. Chairman, I have only one remark, and that is, I'm glad Mr. Harrison put both situations where the county will also, you know, match it, because it's not in my required action that was presented. So, thank you, Mr. Harrison.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Harrison, I have one question. The matching funds, this would be in line with what the board had already previously approved, am I correct?
Yes, sir. So the oversea healthcare foundation has tracked our progress or comments or proposals regarding grocery. They initially funded, as you all very well know, our pavilion. They gave fifty thousand dollars towards our pavilion, and then that's how they were made aware from that effort of our desire to have a permanent local market. And they were made aware of Mr. White's business, Surrey Marketplace LLC. So the local dollars are matched, we're requesting local dollars to match their contribution or commitment. And they have noted that we have been the only locality to actually successfully implement a structure that they funded within a lot of timeframe. So they are eager to see this project after seeing our pavilion erected and being put to good use in our community, they are eager to see this project come to fruition and requesting the county to commit local dollars, matching dollars, to help incentivize the project so it can come to fruition quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Are there any other questions from board members for Mr. Harrison? If there be no other questions, chairman, it's entertaining motion now to request an action to accept the oversea health fund grant in the local market for the amount of three hundred thousand dollars to commit our matching dollars to the Surrey Marketplace LLC.
Mr. Elliott, I'm sorry, this is Tim Calhoun. I had it on mute, and I was trying to get a question out there, please, if I may.
Yes, you may, sir. Go ahead.
I apologize, I was on mute. Mr. Elliott, I know that in previous, we had spoken with Mr. White and asked for some financial information regarding this. I would recommend that we, again, request that information and have it provided before we finalize this money given to him through the county.
Mr. Harrison, can you address that on the deliverables that we asked for and what has been provided?
Yes, sir, I can. Mr. White did provide financial statements in terms of his financial ability or capacity to operate a grocery facility in the county. But they were not in a form in which we could deliver to council and to the board, meaning they were combined funds with other business partners of his and relatives. So I did request him to present it in a form where it would be under his LLC. And also, Mr. White has showed his commitment and contribution and financial ability to foot this project because he has already, number one, provided access for a building or facility. Number two, he's purchased all of the equipment necessary, which would be refrigeration units, truck, refrigerated truck, and transporting equipment for the local market. So that's what I have to offer, and regarding his financials, I do deem him to be, just upon staff's assessment, financially stable. He has committed a sizable investment in the Surrey community with the building itself and the equipment to operate. And he is seeking assistance from the county and now has received a grant application, which also qualifies him financially. The grant from the oversea healthcare foundation in the amount of three hundred thousand towards a local project. He's doing this project in phases, so this is only for the portion of that building that would have been the old hardware site. So I think he is in his right to request some help or some funding from the county, especially if the oversea healthcare foundation is committing three hundred thousand. I think, in staff's opinion, we should meet him halfway and commit the three hundred and then negotiate our stipulations on the tallying after we commit to match the oversea healthcare's foundation's contributions.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. That's the item I was going to bring up, the deliverables as we go along, that we can make sure we have some assurance as a board that our money is put towards good use. But at this time, we do have a three hundred thousand dollar grant that I think is a time limit on this that we have to act upon so we can get those monies in. Am I correct on that, Ms. Harrison?
Yes, sir, they're correct.
Okay. Are there any other questions from board members for Mr. Harrison?
This is Mike Drury, Chairman Elliott.
Yes, Mr. Drury.
I just want to clarify, so this motion is for the acceptance of the three hundred thousand dollar grant from oversea and amend the budget, correct?
I don't, Mr. Harrison can address it, but I don't believe we have to amend the budget because we had previously, as a board, approved the three hundred thousand. And that was my question to Mr. Harrison. We just haven't divvied it out as of yet.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, I was reading the required action, and what I was talking about is amend the budget to reflect the receipt of the grant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman Elliott?
Yes.
This is Ms. Rollins. May I reply to Mr. Drury's question?
Yes, Ms. Rollins.
Yes, Mr. Drury. Mr. Elliott, good evening, members of the board, supervisors, and those on the call. Yes, there is actually two actions this evening. There was two separate actions. One, we do need to, once we get the award from the oversea health foundation, physically the monies, we do need to accept the monies, the grant award, so that is correct, sir. And as far as amending the budget to reflect the receipt of the grant funds, yes, we do, because we're going to have to amend the budget and then disperse those monies through the EDA. And the required action that Mr. Harrison is speaking of is a required action also that we're asking for this evening, and that is to commit the matching dollars for the establishment of the market. So there are actually three motions on this evening. And there were two separate agenda items, and that's why maybe perhaps that may have caused a little bit of the discussion. But those are the three items that we're asking for the board's approval on this evening. I hope that clarifies your question, Mr. Drury.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins, and the amendment of the county. So can we make all three at this time?
That was going to happen, can we do all at the same time?
I think you can.
Mr. Chair, are you ready for motion?
I'm ready for motion, Mr. Drury.
I would like to move that we accept the grant award of three hundred thousand from the oversea healthcare foundation for the establishment of local market and authorize staff to continue the memorandum of understanding with the EDA and administration of the grant, and number two, to amend the budget to reflect the receipt of the three hundred thousand dollar grant funds from oversea healthcare. And the third one is to, I guess it is to amend the budget to, with three hundred thousand dollars to reflect a matching grant, matching fund from the county, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. We have motion. Chair, second on the motion.
Judy, second on the motion, Mr. Chairman.
It has been properly moved. Get a roll call vote, Ms. Chapman.
Yes, sir, roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Next item of business, new business, is proposed organization restructure that we can administer. We're going to ask Ms. Rollins if she would. You there, Ms. Rollins?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am here. Thank you for that. Again, good evening to you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. The item that's for your consideration this evening is a proposed revision to the county's organizational structure. I believe the last time this was brought before you was in July two thousand nineteen. Based on the revisions, the organizational structure for economic planning and community development. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, our building inspections office is always reported to the county administrator. And this is pretty different than what we find in our current localities today, where this function is actually a component of the planning and community development department. We believe that it's in the best interest of the county that we make a change in this particular area, merging inspections with planning and community development, along with the economic development functions. This will assist us to provide more efficiency as we operate our planning and communications, excuse me, planning and community development department. As you know, often when we have projects, it starts with getting the actual permitting. Then it goes off into planning and zoning, and then it ends up with inspection. So this is one umbrella that we believe will be an added benefit to have all of these functions underneath one roof and reduce some of the fragmentation that we have in the organization and certainly increase efficiency. So that is one of the changes that we're asking for this evening on the revised organizational structure. Pacific County goals, as it pertains to lighted properties, community enhancements, beautification are all important to community economic development, one common goal amongst the multiple departments. So we do believe, again, that this practice is a good match for Surrey's organizational structure. Another change that we're asking the board for this afternoon also is for parks and recreation. Parks and recreation is cited as a component of quality of life. When you look into our new developed comprehensive plan, economic development is often connected with the planning and community development. It is relatable, it provides the structural boundaries needed to support the activities as it pertains to planning and community development. So one of the recommendations of this evening is to have parks and recreation move underneath the offices of planning and community development. Finance and information technology. Information technology board members has not reported to finance in many, many years. They are two separate departments. Finance, again, no longer has oversight over information technology. We're also suggesting, rather than information technology, that it be changed to information technology and support. And the reason being is because this particular area has changed dramatically over the number of years. Not only do we provide information technology supports to the various county departments, we have moved into providing those support services to all of the state agencies in the county. And that includes all of our constitutional offices, the sheriff's office, the Department of Social Services. So that office is definitely one that provides many support services. So we want to make that information technology and support. Maintenance department changed to facilities and management. This is just a name change only. This department maintains and manages over fifteen county facilities, including the buildings and grounds. So not only do we want to say maintenance, we want to say this is facilities management. I believe it gives us a better platform and it puts us in a good position to be able to say that we are utilizing all of the resources that we can to make sure that our facilities are not just maintained, but managed in order to provide what we need to give all those who are currently located in the many facilities that we have to maintain in the county. The assistant county administrator. We are recommending this evening that we remove, that we remove, of course, the financial oversight, replace this with planning and community development, added parks and recreation, inspections, zoning, and court enforcement, as I mentioned earlier, as a function of planning and community development consistent with the comprehensive and delays plan. So those are the recommendations that I am asking the board of supervisors to approve this evening as it pertains to the organizational structure. This is in line with similar counties that surround Surrey. In your agenda material, I did put a copy of just one of those localities, so you can see how we are utilizing a very similar structure that works best for the way that we are currently operating here in Surrey County. And the last change I may go ahead and ask for this evening is to approve the recommendation of the revised job assistant of the assistant county administrator to the position, Mr. Elliott and members of the board, to deputy county administrator with the prescribed duties and responsibilities with the promotion of Mr. David Harrison to fill this role. Now, Mr. David Harrison currently serves as the interim director of planning and community development and also as the county's economic development director. Mr. Harrison, due to his desire and his experience and expertise in project management and economic development, David took on a dual role to assist the county in its economic development initiatives. While he was serving the plan of one role, he assessfully assisted the county administrator in special projects. And he was instrumental in the endeavors for the planning, execution, and presentation of many projects in the county. After the former planning director, Ms. Russell left the organization, he was highly recommended by the interim manager, Mrs. Sandy Warner, to serve as the interim planning director of community development, and he fulfilled this position based on his previous expertise and his ability to do the job as required. This is a critical and highly complex and regulatory position. He held this position for six months until the new director was hired and also assisted in transition assistance for additional three months. After he became the county's full-time economic development director, he was full speed ahead in seeking economic development opportunities and endeavors for the county. And there are several projects that he worked on, grant applications, support assistance, the pavilion project, grocery store initiatives, industrial park prospects, Grace Creek legislation, business appreciation events. David has worked with collaborative relationships with the community in several of these efforts, including latent social officials. And he also has supervision over tourism workforce functions also. And after Mr. William Saunders left our organization, he was once again asked to go back and serve in the capacity of he was once again asked to go back and serve in the capacity of interim director of planning and community development while also managing economic development. So we have asked a lot of Mr. Harrison over the last several months. I certainly appreciate his tenacity, his willingness, desire to take on all that has been asked of him. He's doing an excellent job. There's a lot to be said in terms of even just dealing with solar. We know that it's a big thing right now and the fact that he has learned so much as pertains to solar operations in the county. He has also, again, worked, as you can saw diligently with the oversea healthcare foundation in securing that $300,000 grant from the county and solicited county support in the application process, spearheading the rail to trails grant process with the Department of Recreation and Conservation and working with the Economic Development Authority. He's continued to have those collaborative relationships and partnerships that we need for someone to serve in this capacity. So it would be my pleasure this evening if the board would be so kind to approve the recommendation to have Mr. Harrison to serve in this capacity. Thank you for allowing me the time.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Definitely, Mr. Harrison has definitely been busy working for Sari County. We appreciate all his efforts. And you presented us with a reconstruction chart in our packet so we can see how everything is laid out or will be laid out. Fellow board members, are there any questions for Ms. Rollins in regards to post reorganization in the position of Deputy County Administrator for Mr. Harrison?
Ms. Elliott, this is Tim Calhoun. I just have a question, if I may please, for Ms. Rollins.
Yes, Mr. Mr.
Ms. Rollins, if I can ask, in your, in your organization's chart, where would emergency intentions, managers, and dispatchers fall out? They don't have a block on the chart. I'm just wondering if that was omitted or what?
Okay, so in the chart, Ms. Calhoun, there is a block beside finance for emergency management.
Oh, okay, so they would fall under emergency management and they just don't have a block for themselves? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, sir. Well, you mentioned a couple of things. You mentioned where the dispatchers fall?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the dispatchers actually fall underneath the sheriff. There's not a separate department for dispatch. Based on the memorandum of understanding that the board approved, the dispatchers are a function of the sheriff's office. So that's technically where, you know, they are, they lie. But there is a separate department for emergency management.
Okay, and I guess the, the emergency manager, communications manager, is that under the emergency management as well?
No, sir. According to the MOU, the emergency communications manager is underneath the county administrator.
Oh.
And that is according to the, the MOU that was approved. That position reports to the county administrator.
Okay, I'm going to ask a real, one question. Where is there a box for that, emergency communications manager? Or how, I don't see it listed on the organizational chart.
It is not. And if I can say, Mr. Calhoun, with full transparency, this is a old communication, I mean, excuse me, this is an old organizational chart. Mr. Calhoun, this chart was done, I can tell you, sir, probably with, before I left to go to the city of Franklin, I actually did this chart. So it's, it's left to be desired to say that it still needs some updating. So it is not in a final position that this is the way we need to have it shown physically. So there are actually some tweaks that need to be made to it. But this is the one that we, we had, we haven't gone through a process of getting a, a program to redo our chart. So we can certainly make those tweaks to it to reflect how we as an organization, we were just going by an old document, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to point that out. Thanks.
You're surely welcome, sir. Good observation.
Thank you, Ms. Calhoun. Are there any other questions for Rollins? If not, we have two items for action on tonight. That is the approval of the revision, the organizational structure that was adopted July 2019, and approve the recommend, recommended job description revision for the county administrator. Deputy Administrator with the prescribed duties and promotion for Mr. Harrison to fill this role. What is the pressure the board on? There are motion on this revision.
Mr. Chairman, I move, I believe that approve the proposed revisions to our county organization chart along with the proposal. But I would add that by the next board meeting, we have a completed organizational chart that we can find everything.
Yeah, we have a motion on the call for proof of the organizational structure and a
Mr. Chair, Mike Dreyer, second.
Is the problem move a second? Is the roll call vote on these slides?
Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Ms. Little? Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I promise, I think there's a, a request from this, uh, get us updated. Thank you so very much. Uh, we can move to unfinished business. Marina lease renewal. Uh, we call Mr. Hefty, I believe, on this night.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have before you a amended restated lease with the Pack Brothers for the Marina Restaurant. The background of this is, the background of this is that the original lease entered into in 2018. It was a three-year lease. That lease had a provision that they could extend the lease for an additional five years under the same terms as the original lease. The Pack Brothers did not want to enter into the three-year lease unless they had an option for an additional five years. They indicated to the county that they wanted to extend that lease. And there were some things that we wanted to talk about. There were some things they wanted to talk about. And so we made some changes to the lease. And it's a five-year lease. The changes that were made, there were some changes concerning the dock master, who is to help boaters who are there and what specific times they will have a dock master. They agreed to take the responsibility for providing a, an accounting cash register, virtual cash register system that was the county's responsibility, which is about $18,000 that they took over. And they agreed that in any future leases, we could renegotiate the rent to whatever the county wanted. So this lease is for five years. The rent is forty-seven, $4,750 a month for seven months. The busy months, $4,250 for the five other months when they're not as busy. And the county gets 70% of the, of the proceeds from dock rentals, Marina rentals, and the fuel sales. And so this, this is sort of a, it's not a new lease because the provisions were included in the original lease, but some have been changed. And the administration would recommend to the board that you approve this new five-year lease. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hefty. Are there any questions from our board members or Mr. Hefty in regards to the Sari lease? Any questions? If there be no questions, action requested is that we will approve amended and restated lease of the Grace Creek Marina with the Sari Tifu Company for an additional five-year period. Can we get a motion from the board?
Mr. Chair, Mike Dreyer, so moved.
A motion, can we get a second?
Our second emotion.
Has the problem move a second? Can we get a roll call vote on the motion, Ms. Chapman?
Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Hefty. Next on the agenda is appointments. We have an appointment for our planning commission. And appointment be coming from Mr. Calhoun's district. It is Ms. Courtney Lively, representative from, representative from the Sari district, has been serving on the planning commission, has verbally resigned. So at this time, we're going to ask Mr. Calhoun if he could come with a, an appointment for the position for our planning commission.
Yes, sir, Mr. Elliott. At this time, I would like to appoint the member from the Sari district to the Sari County Planning Commission, Ms. Diane Cheek, at this time.
Hey, fellow board members, you heard the appointment. Could we get a, a motion to accept Ms. Cheek on the planning commission?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, can we get a second?
Uh, Mike Dreyer, second.
Problem move a second. Roll call vote, Ms. Chapman?
Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Motion is carried. We welcome Ms. Cheek on the planning commission. There are two other appointments that came to our attention in regards to our social services board, one coming from the Baker Castle District and one from the Clamram district. And we will be addressing these two appointments at our next meeting. The time has not expired for those who are on that board. So we'll be bringing table, table of those until we come back to our December meeting for Ms. Little and myself to make an appointment to those boards. The next appointment tonight is to, pulling it up on my, my device, it is to the Riverside Community Criminal Justice Board. And the appointment is first for Mrs. Melissa D. Rollins to be appointed as a member, as the county administrator to the Riverside Community, excuse me, Riverside Community Criminal Justice Board to serve at the pleasure of the board. Board members, could we get a motion for the appointment of Ms. Rollins to serve on this board?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, can we have a second?
Mike Dreyer, second.
Then probably move a second. Roll call vote, Ms. Chapman?
Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Thank you, board members. The next is a resolution 2020. That's for appointment of a board member to the Riverside Community Criminal Justice Board and the personage of Mr. Garrett Woodton Jr. to be appointed as a local education representative to this board. Could we get a motion to accept the appointment of Mr. Wooden to this position with the Riverside Community Criminal Justice Board? So moved, Mr. Elliott, Tim Calhoun. A motion, can we have a second?
Second.
Then probably move a second. Now, can we have a roll call vote from Mrs. Chapman?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Thank you, board members. The next item is for information only. It is to advise us of the reappointment of board members of Park and Recreation Advisory Board. And the chairperson of that is Mr. George Fauntleroy. And we have Ms. Linda Clayton, Mr. Irvin Jones, and Dr. Lorraine Davis. They will be reappointed. They do not require us to vote on this for our information only. Thank you. So now move into public hearing. First item on the public hearing is continuity of government, the adoption of the ordinance. And we're going to call Mr. Bill Hefty back to make the presentation at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask Mrs. Powell, Ms. Powell, to do this one as well.
All right, y'all working, I love it, I love it.
Working together tonight.
Yes, sir.
Double team effort. Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you all are aware, Virginia is still under a state of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And state law allows locality as a way to continue its operations, which includes the ability to conduct meetings electronically without a physical court being present. And the ordinance before you essentially allows that. The board adopted this ordinance previously. And so the recommendation step is to re-adopt the ordinance. And if that, if the board is inclined to do so, the ordinance will remain in effect until it is repealed by the board or within six months of the end of the disaster or of the pandemic. And I'm happy answering the questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman. At this time, we open the floor for any public comments in regards to continuity of government and re-adoption of the ordinance. The floor is now for public comments. If there be no public comments, we close the public hearing at this time. Are there any comments from any board members in regards to this ordinance, the re-adoption of the ordinance? No comments from board members. We now entertain a motion for the re-adoption of the ordinance of the continuity of government.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion, can we have a second?
Second, Mike Dreyer.
Probably move in second. Can we have a roll call vote, Ms. Chapman?
Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Thank you, board members. Next item on the public hearing is the central absentee precinct ordinance. Mr. Hefty or Ms. Powell, back in your court?
Ms. Powell, would you do this one as well?
Sure. Good evening again. I'm not sure if the registrar, Ms. White, is on the, on the line, but she may want to jump in in the event I miss something.
I'm here.
Oh, okay. Good evening. So there was a, at the recommendation of the Department of Elections, there was an ordinance that was adopted by the board. was, uh, an, uh, an ordinance that was adopted by the board, um, some time ago, maybe the last month or the month before, to create a central absentee precinct. Um, and so in accordance with code, uh, the board would need to adopt this ordinance to ratify its previous action, which would establish a central absentee precinct at the Government Administration Building. And I don't know if Ms. White has anything that she would like to add to that?
I just wanted to add that since we did do the emergency order, um, with having early voting for our first year, starting in September, that the response from the citizens seems to be very overwhelmingly positive, um, as far as getting the vote counts in at the end of election night for this presidential election. It was very quick. We were done before nine o'clock because we didn't have to transport absentee ballots to seven different precincts within the county. We were able to do it all within my office, and it, it was very efficient and very effective. And I, I think over well, overall, that we had positive feedback from the community regarding it. So thank you all so much for that, and I hope that the citizens were happy and pleased with the job that me and my staff were doing.
Thank you. Uh, we now open the floor for public comments in regards to the Central Absentee Precinct, the ordinance in regards to that. It was, it was a emergency order, now we're trying to make it permanent. That will be the action. Are there any, uh, public comments on this matter? If there be no public comments, we now close the public hearing. Are there any comments from board members in regards to this ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, um, I'm, I'm, I just want to be sure I'm understanding this correctly, that every year going forth, what we adopt tonight will be in play, that, um, the registrar's office will be a central place to go and vote for the citizens. They don't have to go to their precincts. They can pre-vote at the registrar's office going forward.
Ms. Ms. White, can you answer that?
That is correct. Um, forty-five days before an election, that we will open up the Central Absentee Precinct for all the citizens within the district to vote in my office.
Thank you. That's, I think that's a plus. And it has been tried, and it was successful. So, um, things are, you know, very quiet out in the community on Election Day. Thank you.
Thank you. They recommend, recommended action is to ratify, to rat, ratify the emergency ordinance adopted September the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty. Uh, is there a motion from the board in regards to this ordinance?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion, can we have a second?
Mike Dury, second.
Probably move a second. Can we have a roll call vote, Ms. Chapman?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes. Motion is carried. Uh, next item under public hearing is, uh, budget amendment request. Uh, Mr. Hefty or Ms. Powell?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, the county administration, um, had an opportunity to, um, look at purchasing a hundred and eighty-two acres, uh, on, in the southern part of the county, um, where it, uh, coincides with Route Forty-Sixty, um, to purchase some property which could be used for an industrial park. Um, the map of the property is attached to the agenda item now. Uh, that was not, uh, posted until today because we had not finished the negotiations with the, with the property owner. Um, but we now have done that. And this is, uh, next to Freeman's Park Pond Road, um, in that part of the county. Uh, it is an advantageous site for industrial development because, uh, it is next to Forty-Sixty, has direct access to Forty-Sixty, has direct access to rail, uh, has water and sewer, um, close to it, and, um, would give the county an opportunity for industrial development in, in a part of the county where, uh, there's access to those facilities. Uh, the purchase price, um, is, uh, either, there are two options. One is to purchase the hundred and eighty-two acres for six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars from Greco, um, company. And the other option is to purchase it for six hundred thousand dollars with Greco retaining the right to timber sixty acres of the, uh, property, uh, subject to the county's approval. Uh, the second option was there to give the board an opportunity to purchase the property at, uh, a lower price if you wanted to do that. There's a sixty-day inspection period if you approve the contract tonight, where the administration can, uh, sort of look at the property, make sure it's, uh, suitable for economic development. And so, uh, the option of how to pay for it, um, you have the sixty days to make that decision as well. So basically, at the January meeting, um, you could come back at summer or January and say, we choose one or the other of the, of the options to pay for it. Um, so the sixty, the sixty-day inspection period gives you the opportunity to look at the property, decide how you want to pay for it, uh, if in fact you want to purchase it. If you don't want to purchase it at the end of that sixty days, uh, we can get out of the contract. We have to make a deposit, but we get the deposit back if we, if we don't go forward. Um, so the public hearing tonight is to transfer, uh, seven hundred thousand dollars to, um, for property acquisition, um, and have that money available. There is five hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars that is available in the Economic Development Fund, but it was not included in this year's budget. And so, the public hearing is on the question of whether to transfer that economic development money, which has already been set aside, to the current year's budget and to appropriate the remainder, uh, from unappropriated reserves so that the money is there to purchase the property. Uh, so there are really two actions that the board needs to do. The first one is to, uh, authorize the transfer, uh, of the funds from the Economic Development Fund and Unappropriated Reserve to the current budget for property, real property acquisition. And the second is to enter into the purchase contract, uh, with Greco to, uh, purchase the property with the understanding that, uh, you have the sixty-day inspection period to determine whether you want to go through with it or not. Um, Mr. Harrison, um, and Ms. Rollins, uh, have both been involved in this, and I don't know whether they want to chime in or not, but that's basically the deal. And, uh, if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Hefty. Mr. Harrison or Ms. Rollins or Ms. Swindell, you'd like to add anything to it?
I'm good, Chairman Elliott.
Thank you. If not, we will now open the floor for public comments in regards to fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget amendment request.
Hello, uh, this is Diane Cheek.
Yes, Ms. Cheek.
Uh, I'm from the Suri District. I, uh, submitted several questions to Ms. Rollins and the board concerning purchase. I understand that the public hearing is about transferring the funds, but I think what we may be setting ourselves up for something, it's not clear to me that we really understand why we're purchasing this. I know you said it's an industrial park. I mean, we have one already. So what's the push for this particular property? What's the plan? How, how does this fall into the county's current plans for economic development that, so that we, the public, understand that we're doing this in a planned, thoughtful approach to appropriate this money for this? I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but it's just that there's not enough information available for an informed decision to be made from what we know today. Uh, Ms. Rollins did send me an email and say that all my questions would be answered this evening, but, um, in the presentation that was just given, it did not cover, you know, things like the environmental concerns and, and is there rezoning needed and, and things like this. I mean, does the land perk? I mean, what, what are the utility bills? Who's going to take care of these things? These are all the things that are like those backend questions that the taxpayers end up, we end up with this bill, and we have to pay it because we agreed to something. So I'm concerned that we're moving ahead without not really understanding the full impact of what we're agreeing to in the decision tonight. And I just want to bring that forward for everyone to just be thoughtful about when, as we make decisions like this. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Cheek. Are there any other, uh, comments from the public?
Hi, this is Susan Corvello, um, Claremont District.
Yes, Ms. Corvello.
Um, I just had a couple, um, questions concerning the purchase of this land, um, from our previous time with the industrial park that we have currently. I know that we had to do, um, I'm, I'm going to be loss of words of this, where we had to do, um, an inspection on the land as to the tiers, as to what could be placed where on the property. Um, and we had to pay people to do this, um, which is another expense, um, as far as the land parking and what it's going to be used for, the rezoning, as Ms. Cheek had stated also. Um, and like she stated, there's, there's not really a lot of information that the public has been given to do any kind of investigating as far as what we're using this land for. I mean, we have an industrial park that's not fully used as it is, and I understand it's in a different location, but we haven't utilized it to its fullest, um, extent yet. And as far as transferring money, um, how much is the deposit that has to be put down? If we're going to go into a contract that has to have a deposit, can't we only transfer just that deposit right now? Why do we need to transfer the full amount? Um, if we haven't even looked at the land, um, you've got sixty days to do that. So I, I just personally think that either more information needs to be given to the public as what your intentions are. Um, are there companies already looking to, to go there since it's off Route Sixty? That's the kinds of things that I think this, um, the citizens would be interested in knowing as to what our money is being spent on when we've spent so much money on the other industrial park and we have one large company in there, and that's it. And we've spent money on all these tiers, and we don't have anybody else in there. Um, that's a large purchase just to say okay to. Thank you.
So, any other comments? If there be no other, uh, public comments, we now close the public hearing. Are there any comments from board members?
Um, Mr. Chairman, this is Judy Little. Um, I'm sure we will get an answer to our two ladies who spoke and had questions, but I did get a chance to, because I didn't really know where the property was. I thought it was one place and it was another place. Um, so I did, uh, Mr. Harrison took me out there, and it's a beautiful site. Now, um, with the agreement that we're entering into, we have sixty days to answer all questions. And so, any questions that, um, other than what the two ladies have already asked, they have sixty days to get all their questions in, plus the fact the board has, um, will have the opportunity to do all those things as well as other, um, activities to make sure that this would be a good play for Suri County. Um, Suri, since I've been on the board, and it's been quite a while, has always have looked for a site in Suri County that was on Route Sixty. And I don't know, for some reason, it was, um, not revealed until yet lately that that piece of property was there, but, uh, you know, it didn't belong to us. It belonged to the Gray Company. So, um, this is our opportunity. We feel like, I feel like it's something that we as a community have been wanting for quite a while. It's, um, some of it does border the railroad. The railroad runs through Suri County, which we had no idea did. So, you know, if we can capitalize on this, it would be a great thing. Uh, we were with the other site for quite a while, could not get a, um, landlord, but we did eventually. So sometimes your investments do take a long time to come to futation. But, um, I think we're living in a period in time now where we see people moving into the area, and they are looking for sites off of Route Sixty. And so, in my opinion, this is a great site. It's, it's got good, again, we'll do the investigation, and we have sixty days, in my opinion, to make our final decision.
Thank you, Ms. Little. Any other board member comments? If not, can we, are there any closing remarks?
Yes, Mr. He, Mr. Elliott, this is Ms. Rollins. Okay, um, and Mr. Harrison certainly may chime in, but in response to just, uh, some of the questions, um, obviously, um, board members and members of the public, anytime that you're dealing with, um, uh, projects of this nature and economic development, obviously, there are certain things that cannot be divulged, especially in terms of when you have, um, prospects that may want to come. And if all this stuff has not yet been thought through, you cannot really get that information out. Um, I did respond to, um, the citizens' request for information in that I did say that some of the information would be provided, um, this afternoon, and I did not believe that perhaps maybe all the answers would be provided in the presentation, um, that was just given, um, to Mr. Hefty. Um, David may speak to the comprehensive plan, but we do know if you take a look at the twenty-fourth comprehensive plan, there is the strategic planning in terms of, um, having additional properties in the county, especially such a prime property in terms of having, as Mrs. Little alluded to, property that definitely fronts, um, the major corridor of Route Sixty. The comprehensive plan speaks to the fact that in order for the county to be able to, um, have successful community and economic development, that these are the type of out of, out of the box, critical, uh, critical things that we need to do to, uh, plan for the, uh, future betterment of our county in terms of trying to bring businesses in, in the county. Uh, we have had a, uh, environmental done on it. Uh, we have been in conversations with, uh, the, uh, state, uh, agencies in terms of how we can solidify, uh, funding to help develop, um, the property. I believe what Ms. Corvello could have been speaking to in terms of, um, the monies that the county solicited from, uh, the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, um, to do a site characterization, um, of that property. And that's something that we can definitely do. As a matter of fact, um, I got a phone call from the, uh, Virginia Gateway Region on this, uh, yesterday, as a matter of fact. And the conversation was that, um, Go Virginia, um, certainly there could be an opportunity for the county to solicit funds from the Go Virginia to be able to, um, develop, um, sites. Um, of course, I did not divulge, um, at that particular time, uh, because we need to get through what we need to do tonight, but there is opportunities for the county, um, as we've done before, to go in and seek, um, additional, um, fundings that we would need to, um, make sure that we, uh, we get all the resources to help develop, um, a property such as this. So that is just my added comments tonight, and, and Mr. Harrison may have some additional comments.
Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Rollins, thank you. Just piggybacking. This does align with our comprehensive plan. Our plan does suggest that we should identify industrial sites to develop. And the community has had an involvement with, with the development of comprehensive plan. So we have to understand as a community that when citizens work with us in terms of local government officials and employees to develop a plan, we should be encouraged to take strides to, to stay in alignment with the plan and to seek proper economic development for the county. The Comprehensive Plan, again, does suggest for us to acquire property for industrial purposes. Our current industrial park has already been certified as Tier Four. We've worked with the state regulatory, regulatory agencies to do that, so, and, and it's been perfect for smaller businesses. But in terms of industrial prospects, as Ms. Rollins stated, they typically do look for sites in close proximity to major highways as well as rail. And to my knowledge, this is the only property in the county that fronts 460 and actually touches the rail. And again, as Ms. Rollins stated previously, economic development endeavors or projects are very sensitive, and in most cases, we as staff are bound by confidentiality. If the prospect does not want us to disclose negotiations or disclose what their planned moves might be in terms of locating in Surry County, we, we are not able to do that. So sometimes we are not able to give you the information that you might want to know upfront in, in a timely fashion until negotiations, negotiations have been solidified. So that's just my two cents. I do think it's a very good move for Surry. Ms. Little did state that Surry has always, to my knowledge and her knowledge, sought to purchase or have property for industrial development on 460. And now we finally have that opportunity and to our knowledge, it's the only property in the county that we would be able to develop to that regard. And I would like to just leave you with saying that we, as a county, if we want to be able to grow, we have to be willing to invest in our community and in economic development. So that's all I have in regards to the, the land acquisition and purchase. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins and Mr. Harrison. At this time before us, fellow board members, is a request to amend the fiscal year 2021 general budget to transfer no more than $700,000, some coming from Economic Development Fund, and another portion from our general fund, and also to come into a purchase contract with Grayco. Those two are requesting action on, out on tonight. Is there a motion from the board at this time on these two items?
Mr. Chair, Mike Drury.
Yes, Mr. Drury.
If I can just make a, make a comment.
Yes, sir.
Again, and then a motion is that five, five years ago, when I ran for the board, of course, I knew this area of the county, but didn't quite realize that Surry County reached that far and became aware of this property and found out that the Gray family owned it. Mr. Holmes, and I wish he was with us tonight, because he and I talked about this property as well as property up in his neck of the woods, so to speak, but in his area, it didn't reach 460. And, and I'm, I'm pleased with staff going forth. I'm surprised the property is still available to the county. It's the only one, as Mr. Harrison says, that touches 460. And, and I, I think we'll have some prospects on it. Again, I'm, I'm real pleased that the county's been able to tie it up before someone else jumps on it. And again, and thanks to the staff and to the Gray family for allowing us and the county, you know, to, to, to go into contract. So, so I'm real pleased with this because again, doing my tenure, I've had my eye on it and really, really glad to see us be able to tie it down and hopefully the study period will come out okay, that the county can develop this area. So, so thanks to staff and all that put this together. Makes, makes me feel good that county will be having it under their control. And with that, I'm going to, to make the motion, I believe we've got to do it to, to authorize the transfer of the 700,000, or is it the 559? I'm confused on that, but.
It would be a total.
It's the motion to transfer $700,000 from the Economic Development Fund and the remainder, and the undesignated general fund reserves. It's, it's the 559 and the Economic Development Fund and the remainder from general reserves. Okay, so that's, that's motion number one is to authorize the transfer that just was described and to enter into the contract as, as presented. And again, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. We have a motion on the floor. Can we get a second? Second, Mr. Elliott, Tim Calhoun. It has been proposed move a second. Ms. Chapman, need a roll call vote, please.
Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Motion is carried. We now move into staff reports and presentation.
Mr., excuse me, Mr. Elliott?
Yes, Ms. Little.
I think there was a second part to that. We did not, I didn't hear it in Mr. Drury's motion, the motion to.
He made the motion to go into the contract with Grayco, he did.
He did, okay. All right, thank you.
Both were included. Thank you, Ms. Little.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have staff reports and presentations. We had an amendment to our agenda at the beginning of the meeting, and at this time, if Dominion Power is on the line, we will yield to them for their presentation.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Elliott, County Administrator Ms. Rollins, and Board of Supervisors for adding us to your current agenda. My name is Troy Lindsey, and I'm the External Affairs Manager for Dominion Energy. We're going to have a brief presentation by Stephanie Harrington, who's our Communications Consultant, and also Ed Diggs, our Rural Broadband Program Manager is on board as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Troy. And again, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Ms. Rollins, and to the callers tonight. We do appreciate this opportunity to provide an update to the county. Let me first check and make sure you can hear my voice.
Yes, definitely. It sounds.
Okay, great. Excellent. It appears as though we are going to be bringing up a few slides on the screen. Let's see, if I can share, it looks like I'm being asked to share. Just bear with me for a second. The slides that I'm going to be sharing on the screen are part of the agenda package that was shared on the county website today. I'm also going to be making multiple references to Dominion Energy's public website. The, the URL address is dominionenergy.com/ruralbroadband. And that is a central hub where we provide a plethora of information to the public and to property owners in general. Thank you for bearing with me while I pull this up. All right. Are you able to see the screen?
Yes.
There's the URL address. Thank you for that. There is the URL address that I had mentioned. You know, we're so lucky here in Virginia that the General Assembly in 2019 saw fit to move forward with legislation that enables partnerships like what is occurring today in Surry County between Dominion Energy Virginia and a local internet service provider, Rural Band. This is unique. A lot of states are envious of what's happening in Virginia, and so we're excited to move forward with these partnerships with non-governmental internet service providers to provide what we refer to as middle mile infrastructure. And as Troy mentioned, including Troy and our, our Program Manager, Ed Diggs, our team has combined, you know, decades of experience of building infrastructure at Dominion Energy, but this is really unique. You know, we work really hard every day to keep the lights on, to improve the resiliency of the power grid. And what's so exciting about what we're working on today in Surry County is not only going to help us with grid operations, but also enable citizens who do not today have internet to have broadband capabilities at their home and business. And so it goes without saying, it, it was always important in 2019. That's why the legislation passed unanimously. But here are just a few examples of today's, what we're living with today. I, I myself have personally taken advantage of telemedicine, and I'm, I'm privileged to be able to do that because I have high-speed internet in my home, but a lot of people in Surry County can't take advantage of that. And so that's what we're trying to help is build that bridge. And so having more people to be able to do schoolwork from the comfort of their home, not have to drive to a hotspot, and, and grow their business in Surry County. Let me see if I can advance the slide here. Bear with me. So what you see here on this next slide is a map. The blue line on the map to the right basically shows the infrastructure that Dominion is working to build in support of this broadband initiative. It, it essentially creates a, an X on the map there. What you see there is our electric distribution infrastructure. We already have invested a lot in infrastructure in the county in the form of electric distribution lines. And what we propose with this partnership is to utilize those poles to hang a new fiber optic cable. It's, it's very limited in any impact, and by utilizing that infrastructure, we're able to reach areas in the county that are not served by internet. We provide this, what we call the middle mile, and then we hand that off to our partners. And in this case, it's Print Storage Electric Co-op Rural Band. We were pleased to make this announcement earlier this year, and we've been moving forward with this project for several months. The, the blue lines that you see on this map that are representative of Dominion infrastructure, we currently cross about 450 properties. And those properties, we have easements on hand that allow us to operate the grid. These are easements for the actual poles and wires that go across people's property. And I'd just like to point out and thank over 400 of these property owners that we've worked with have signed what we refer to as our supplementary communications easement. These easements are necessary for Dominion Energy to build the middle mile infrastructure to move forward with our broadband project. And so I'm going to see if I can move to the next slide. The interest of time here. And bear with me. Here's a, a further infographic, if you will, that better illustrates what I was trying to describe as Dominion being the middle mile. We're building a fiber optic cable between our substations. These are what we refer to as trunk lines. These provide the experience that we need for operations and also to provide the capability to work with third-party entities such as Rural Band. And then we also build lateral, lateral infrastructure as well that helps Rural Band and other partners reach homes and businesses that today do not have internet. That's where we basically make the handoff. Rural Band and our other ISP partners in other parts of the state take it from there, and they build what the industry terms last mile, that last mile infrastructure that actually reaches the businesses and homes that today do not have access to high-speed internet. As I mentioned before, we began our outreach to the property owners along the Dominion Energy trunk line back in the summer. We're moving forward quite well with the program. We provide more details about the easements and about our requests on our website here. And in particular, we have frequently asked questions that will further address any citizens' questions about easements or timing on our middle mile infrastructure program. Then, just one last slide, and then we're happy to take questions. It's worth saying that all of our employees and our contractors, when we are out in the community, working with property owners, getting easement signed or notarized, of course, we're adhering to social distancing protocols and guidelines. You know, they're wearing masks and they are definitely adhering to these concerns that we faced during the pandemic. And just to reiterate, you know, Dominion Energy ourselves, we are not an internet service provider. I do get a few emails from time to time. Folks in Surry reach out to us and say, when am I getting internet at my home or business? And they are so kind of to actually provide me an address. I, I let them know that they should direct those types of questions to the local internet service provider to provide that information. And then one more note on the easement. Again, we just want to thank over 400 property owners that have helped us keep on pace and get this project moving. We hope to start construction in January. For those that have yet to sign the supplemental easement, we would like to direct you to please call the Doyle Land Services. Their telephone number, for those that are dialed in tonight, is 1-800-283-8853. Again, Doyle Land Services are working to get signatures on the remaining easement, and their telephone number is 800-283-8853. Or you can email them at broadbandinfo@doyleland.com. So that concludes my prepared remarks. Again, Ed Diggs and I are happy to field questions. We really appreciate being added to your agenda tonight. We're very excited about this project. We know what it means to people to be able to connect for school, for work, for telemedicine from the comfort of their home, and also what it really means for economic development across Surry County.
Thank you, Ms. Harrington, for the presentation. Yes, indeed, we are excited about getting the internet service throughout the county. And we thank you for giving us this information and, and what we need to do to expedite this. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments for Ms. Harrington from board members?
Sir, this is Tim Calhoun. Sorry. If, if there's a resident that has not been contacted regarding the easement that may cross their land, I, I'm assuming you would, would want them to call that, those numbers or email the addresses that you provided in your presentation?
Uh, yes, Supervisor Calhoun, we have actually already made proactive outreach to any property owner where we have identified we need easements. So we've already by direct mail, on multiple direct mail, and in many instances, telephone calls, we've already made that initial contact.
Okay, and if, and if somebody feels that they, that the line may cross their, their property and have not been contacted, they can call Doyle Land Services or email them just to confirm and make sure everything's okay to make that, that crossing of their land?
Sure, that, that would be, that would be okay. Just to point out, though, if, if folks have not yet been contacted, because we've been making those contacts since July, then by definition, that means that the, the project's going to be elsewhere.
Okay, thank you.
If you need assistance in the climate area, you let me know. We, I, I'll help you. We need it in this town bag.
Ms. Elliott, I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Little.
Um, I have worked with the. I have worked with the Doyle group to contact some of those citizens. And I will say, there are a couple or so that are still anti, or it won't, you know, they're not really interested. So I haven't been able to convince them that it is for the benefit of the community. So my question to Ms. Harrington is, hopefully, that will not prevent others from getting the service because you have some that will not sign an easement agreement.
So we actually ask and answer this question on our website in our frequently asked questions. But I'm going to, since Ed Diggs is on the call, I would like for the program manager to explain what the impacts are when we don't have signatures on easements and how that can impact the overall project.
Thank you.
And Ed, if you're available to unmute, otherwise, I can go ahead and address the question.
Just go ahead, Stephanie.
Okay. So as I mentioned, we ask and answer this question on our public website. So what happens if an easement isn't signed? Well, what that means is, we're going to have to go back to the drawing board. These are linear projects on the map that I showed. We know exactly where our poles are. We know exactly where we want to just hang the fiber to continue the line. However, without easement agreements, what we may have to do is seek another route, which could cause delays that will certainly increase the cost of the program. We may have to work through and bury a line somewhere. So it's basically, it goes from being signing paperwork to going back and making some engineering decisions that could impact the project.
Thank you.
Ms. Harrington, Mr. Lindsey, question. Obviously, this is Melissa Rawlins. So this was the next step in terms of doing the presentation here tonight, to get this information out to the board and to the citizens. What is your recommended next steps? I know you already sent out the notices to the property owners. Are you suggesting that the county send out notices from the county to these property owners? Or what is exactly your proposed next steps after this evening?
So what we propose is, we wanted to, number one, just make everyone aware of the progress that we've made because it's been very substantial. And then we would like for folks to recognize that it could perhaps lead to delays. As a follow-up, Ms. Rawlins, Troy Lindsey, our government affairs representative, can work with you directly to talk to you about areas where there could be areas of impasse. It's really a case-by-case basis. In some instances, as I mentioned, there might be an engineering solution where we cross the road, go down the road, cross back over, and go on. So I really, I would hesitate to make a global statement on global next steps. I would just say that we would encourage everyone to realize that it is a complete program in itself. It takes all of us to make this successful. And so I don't know if that avoids answering your question, but it really is a case-by-case basis on what our next steps would be in those areas. We've actually taken this project, it's 43 miles. We've broken it into 11 segments. Some of those segments are pretty close to going to construction. Others, we do have more of an opportunity to work with private property owners to make sure they're aware that signing the easement could really help us move forward in a more expedited manner.
Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, I'm going to check my phone and see, Mr. Diggs. He was having some difficulties with his connection, so I do apologize for that. But hopefully, we've addressed the main topics tonight, and please reach out to us through Troy Lindsey for any follow-up questions. And again, thank you so much for adding us to your agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Harrington. We appreciate your time. Next item on staff reports and presentation will be our first quarter financial report. You have a presentation on our financial report.
Yes, Ms. Swindell will be giving that presentation.
Okay.
Good evening, Chairman Elliott, members of the board. We put together a financial report that's in a new format from what you've received in the past. As you may be aware, we had been giving you monthly information, department by department, for the general fund for expenditures only, and it didn't really provide any context. So we put together this new report that will be presented to the board quarterly, and it summarizes the county's overall financial condition as of the end of the first quarter. We're looking not only at expenditures but revenue, which is important, particularly now that we're still dealing with the economic impacts of the coronavirus. As you may be aware, the county's top five revenue sources, primarily Public Service Corporation, comprised in total 93% of your general fund revenues. So just by looking at those top five revenue sources, we can get a good idea of where the county is from a revenue standpoint overall. The only one that's not property tax-related, however, is the reimbursement from the state for constitutional officers. The top five in descending order of magnitude to the budget are Public Service Corporation, real estate taxes, personal property, the reimbursement from the state for national officers, and the reimbursement from the state for the Personal Property Tax Relief Act. The tax-based revenues, the county has one due date. Unlike many localities, the county just has one due date in December. So December 5th, which means that the vast majority of the tax revenue comes in in a very short time window from November to December. So as you can see on the report, we haven't received any Public Service Corporation tax and very little real estate and personal property. The Personal Property Tax Relief Act likewise also comes in generally in one or two increments in the year. So you'll get a better picture of this once we get into our mid-year review after we have the second quarter results. Overall, though, revenues are at 6% of the budget. And again, that's primarily because so much of your revenue is property tax-based. Expenditures are at 19% of the budget, which is on target. Again, this report only covers the first three months of the year, but most of the department's costs are comprised of, because the county is a service organization, is comprised of salaries and benefits. The one large department is the transfer to other funds, which you can see on the chart on the second page of the report, which is budgeted $18.1 million. The funds are transferred to the schools monthly, which is the largest amount of the transfer to the other funds. Money's also transferred to social services on a regular basis. But for a number of the funds, what we do is, when we get to the end of the year, we look at just what is needed to transfer to those funds. So a lot of the funds, the transfer is not done until we do part of our year-end work. I've also included a detail, which you can peruse at your leisure, of department by department, where each department is, budget to actual. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has. And also, we welcome any feedback on the format. If there's any additional information that you want or any changes, we certainly are open to enhancing the report. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Swindell, for the report and the format. It's very informative, and it breaks it down for us. And we get this on a quarterly basis. It would give us a better insight on what's going on throughout the course of the year. So I am very pleased with the report that you have put together for us. Thank you so much. Any other board members have any comments for Ms. Swindell?
Thank you, Ms. Swindell. It is very informative, and we can certainly follow where we are. So thank you.
You're welcome. I'm glad it's useful.
This is Mike Gray, and again, thanks as well.
Thank you, Ms. Swindell. Next item we have is the Rail to Trails Report.
Mr. Chairman, this is for your information item this evening. We don't have to do a presentation on that unless you all have any specific questions.
Thank you, Ms. Rawlins. I appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Rawlins. Next item is CARES food access. Is there a report on that, Ms. Rawlins?
Yes, sir. I think Ms. LaSonia White should be on the call, and she can be very brief, but she could just give us a quick update as to what to anticipate in the next two weeks for the distribution of the food access to the community.
Ms. White, are you there?
While she's trying to join, Mr. Elliott, I can say that there is a communication that's in your agenda material. It's one of the attachments. This information is also available on our website, but it does give the specific dates as to when the county is going to have that distribution. I'm going to look at the date right here. Mr. Harrison, if you are on the call, if you can chime in and give that information just for about two or three minutes, since Ms. White is not on the call, to have a difficulty, sir.
Yes, ma'am, I can. We have two planned dates, Chairman Elliott, members of the board, and we have two planned dates for distribution of the CARES food access to our community. The first one would be November 20th, right before the Thanksgiving holiday, and Miss White's cooperative extension, Surrey Farmers Market, Surrey Social Services, Surrey County Administration, and Surrey Marketplace LLC. Mr. Andrew White are all working collaboratively to make this event possible. We are looking to feed over 600 or more of our vulnerable population or at-risk elderly population and give them free grocery boxes on that day. We're also looking at another distribution date of December 18th to do the same for our vulnerable populations and community, and same persons partnering on that date as well. We are getting some donations or commitments for donations from several businesses and entities as well to endeavor. We thank the board for appropriating the funds to assist our community. Alan, any questions that you may have?
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. I have had an opportunity to speak with Mr. White on this project, and it's definitely going to be a win-win for the citizens and the business owners of the county. So I thank you for the efforts that have gone into making this project come to fruition, and it's coming at a very needed time, right around the holidays, and we look forward to being a blessing to the citizens of Surrey County. So thank you for your endeavors in this matter. That's what we're here for, to be able to help and to serve the citizens of our county. So thank you.
Okay, Mr. Elliott, the next staff reports and presentations are, again, for the board to supervise this information. If we were in a different setting, we would love to do the presentation for the library, but because we are in the virtual mode, it would be great if board members and citizens can take it and look at it at your leisure. The next item, the memorandum of the Audit of Public Accounts, is for your information. It speaks to the success of the audits of those two constitutional officers. And the treasurer's report, which is normally given by our treasurer in red, I do not believe our treasurer's on the call. That can be for your information tonight, unless you would like to have staff read that treasurer's report.
I'm fine with, for being information.
Okay.
Any board members object to that? Thank you, Ms. Rawlins. We continue to press on.
Okay, and the next item on the agenda is the county administrator's report. Okay, at the October Board of Supervisors meeting, Mr. Chairman and board members, the offers received on the Confederate monument was to be a part of the county administrator's report, but I did not mention it during the opening session. It was, again, to be a part of the ending report at that time. After the motion was entered into closed session, it was addressed after the board reconvened from closed into this regular session. I want to share with the public tonight that that information, as to the proposals that were received, there were two of them, have been recorded in the minutes at the October 5th meeting, and you can see that information in your agenda material tonight. I wanted to share that based on concerns from the citizens that this information was not shared during the opening session. We have a lot, Mr. Chairman, that has happened since we last convened. We have opened to the public by appointment. Being that we have not had the opportunity to operate like this before, it has gone very well. A press release had gone out to how to reach each office and to how to make an appointment with applicable offices, and that information is available on our website. The planning commission this week heard the application of LaBla Solar last week with the recommendations to defer action until this November meeting, presuming a December public hearing. There was a lot of public input, for the dialogue with the representatives this week revealed their desire to address the concerns raised during that meeting as they continued through the process. And Mr. Harrison reported that as power would be before the planning commission in January for a public hearing. I want to state that we have a new emergency communications manager. There was a promotion of one of our current dispatchers to the position, Ms. Kelly Coon. What I can say, Chairman Elliott and members of the board, from having listened to four internal candidates, is that we have a wonderful group of communication officers who are passionate about their jobs, desire to have effective communications with external public safety agencies and volunteers. They desire advanced, robust training, opportunity for advancement. They look out for each other as a team, and they're still learning, enjoying the new CAD system. The Next Gen 911 Project and the Emergency Medical Dispatch System that was approved by the county would certainly be a plus when implemented, adding value to delivery quality services to emergency services, not to mention the radio system that we are looking into, get the radio system communications project, which that should be a project that we should be forthcoming in the near future as far as starting that process. We have been asked, Mr. Chairman and board members, to do an appreciation ad thanking our law enforcement officers for their service. We also want to take the time to, again, thank law enforcement for their service. We will see the ad, I believe, in the Sussex City Dispatch. But again, sir, I want to take this opportunity as well to thank our emergency communication officers for their dedication to what is obviously a tough job. We have had some turnover in the past, working with Sheriff Turner and the new emergency communications manager. We will work to build sustainability in such a critical service area. It's really tough in a small organization to fill gaps, critical positions. I want to, at this particular time, to say that Mr. Roy Lane, who was a deputy, served as a communication liaison and I guess a in facto emergency communications manager after Mr. Justice Smith left, and I want to take the time to publicly thank him for taking that on. Thanks to Sheriff Turner and all his team and all the participants who put on... Thanks to Sheriff Turner and all his team and all the participants who put on a successful, safe, spirited trunk or treat for the youth and the youth at heart. A site visit to the Dendron Solid Waste Convenience Site on last Friday completed my landscape tour of all the solid waste convenience sites in the county. We will be moving forward, we'll be getting updated signage, general cleaning of the sites, maintaining them, including the fence at the Dendron site, which was, I was made aware of recently. We will have three of our more senior attendants, I want to say, are going to be out next week due to illness, and we want to wish them well. In the motion that was approved this evening as far as the surplus vehicles, there was surplus property that was approved under previous administration. I want to say that this time, we've already taken the necessary steps to get that surplus property removed from county grounds, including the vehicles, equipment that's located at the Palmview site. We have already removed several pieces of equipment that were already declared surplus from the animal control site. We are pleased to say that that site is definitely looking better. On a personal note, I want to add that when I toured the Dendron site, I had the opportunity to let back on my roots. I'm not sure whether now you know this, Mr. Drury and Mr. Board Members, but I grew up spending a lot of time in Dendron. I attended St. Mark's Holiness Church there. So when I was there last Friday, it took me a time to do a little bit down memory lane. So I just wanted to kind of add that. And if you remember, there was a store across the street, which was the the Jackin Store, and we used to walk across the street from the church to get candy doing service. And my grandparents didn't like that when we did it just the same, but that's just a personal note there. I'm enjoying my tour in the town of Dendron. Extension Service will be getting out information for pesticide certifications to be renewed so our farmers can now take classes online and receive certification. Ms. White want me to report that she's going to try to have a social distance opportunity for the farmers who prefer to have that face-to-face training to get their pesticide training. As far as finance, I'm pleased to hear that you liked the report and appreciated it from finance in terms of that quarterly report. This is something, again, I do believe that it provides a more meaningful report than what had been previously provided. We are ready next week to do our closing on the Virginia Resource Authority loan. We did receive a little better interest rate that was reported by our financial advisor, so that's very good to hear. Employee Appreciation Day is Friday, November 6th, board members. And what we're providing is just a small box lunch for our employees in recognition of the years of service with the county on tomorrow underneath the pavilion, social distancing in place as a way, again, to show that we are in fact board members in the community, that we are in this together during the pandemic. And with that stated, I want to end my report today with the employee highlight. And she has already spoken this evening, but that is Ms. Shonay White and her team at the Surrey County Registrar. Ms. Shonay White on Wednesday reported the following. It was very challenging with all the changes through the state. Surrey County opened up its first cap, which was a huge assist. Forty-nine percent turned out for early voting, beating most of the surrounding counties. Turned out for overall election was around 78%. Over 800 citizens voted by mail, and she only hit 30 who had not turned a ballot at that time. Her office worked 12 to 14 hours, seven days a week last week. She and her team reported that she was proud to have this position and proud of her county. Everyone was very helpful and supportive in making not just any election, but a election during the pandemic's success. She certainly has a story to share with her kids and her grandkids. And so I just want the board members in the public at this time to just join me in a virtual applause to Ms. White and her team for a job well done during this first election during the pandemic in Surrey County.
Great job.
Great job.
Great job. Great job.
And next Wednesday is Veterans Day. Our county offices are closed. And happy early Veterans Day to all of the citizens who are listening on this evening who are veterans. And that concludes my report on tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins, for your report. At this time, we do open our meeting up for public comments. Are there any citizens there now that would like to make a public comment? We do open the floor at this time. You have a three-minute timeframe to express your comments.
Can you hear me, Mr. Elliott?
I can now.
Okay.
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. I sent an email back on October 29th. To the board of supervisors.
Is this Ms. Diane Cheek?
I'm, it's Susan.
Okay, Ms. Covelo. Okay, I can hear you now.
Yeah, there was some mics open, I think, and I was getting feedback. I'm sorry. I sent an email back on October 29th to all the board of supervisors, county administrator David Harrison and Bob Chandler, in regards to the solar farms and your particular thoughts so that our county can start to get an understanding on where everyone stands. Since no one has had the opportunity to respond, I was going to address the topic tonight. In my email, if you get a chance to look at it, I attached a letter that discusses the solar farms and the impact on the environment and community. I was curious if it's been discussed on how many acres Surrey County is willing to give up to these solar farms before we stop letting them in. With more and more of the solar companies looking to come to our county, which, from what I understand, there's two more companies looking to come into the county, I hope that everyone has looked into the outcome of what happens with these farms, the industrial companies, as they're called. It's not just having a new company coming into our county, but the damage that'll cause in the outcome. The solar farms not only bring lower all-around income for the county because their payments depreciate under, I believe it's a code 58.1-3660, 80% of their assessed value is in the first five years in the service after commencement of commercial operation. Then it drops to 70% in the second five years and 60% for all years remaining. I would hope and pray that Surrey County has not only looked at what money this initially may bring in to the county, but what the long-term effects may be with the environmental risks and hazards, how it may affect tourism, residents and their possible decline of their property, the watershed, the roadways, which we know we have issues with, the cost of cleanup for any damages brought on to the panels. We already can see the flooding issues that we have around the solar farms in the Spring Grove area that never used to flood when we had heavy rains due to the clearing of the land. And one of the bigger questions that's not been answered yet is when these panels are decommissioned, where will they be sent to? They are considered a hazardous waste, and you can't just dump them in the landfill, and it's still unknown of their statuses. I would suggest, if you have the time, to possibly read the article that I had attached to my emails, to get a clearer picture for what these farms are doing in certain areas. It was definitely an eye-opener to me. My suggestions on having more solar farms coming into the county needs to stop. We've got two large areas right now that we don't know how it's going to affect us in the long run. If anybody would like to reply to my email and let me know your thoughts and your opinions on the solar farms, it would be greatly appreciated. And it would be nice to know where the county stands and how much we are willing to give up of our farmlands, our woodlands in our county. And I would like to also say thank you to Sharna White, the registrar, for her handling on the election day and addressing the citizens in such a timely manner on the Facebook page that she had. There were several concerning questions, and she was able to get to them in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Covelo. I would just like to let you know that the board members did receive your email. And a lot of times, you may want a response back once you send the email. But once, once you have something in the process, we are not at liberty to respond. Whilst the application is going forth and it's in the public hearing, the board members, we're not at liberty to respond to every question that is given to us. But be well assured that your concerns are being taken into consideration. And just as you want the best for Surrey County, so does the board members. But we are not ignoring you, but there are just some things at the time that they are presented to us, we cannot respond to. Thank you. Are there any more public comments?
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
The email that I was addressing was in reference to the solar farms, not the purchase of the land.
I understand. That's what I'm referring to.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Are there any other public comments?
Hello, Mr. Elliott. This is Diane Cheek, Surrey District. I was wondering about the process with the government offices being closed. My understanding was that appointments could be made. And I've been trying to contact one of the county government officers for several weeks now. I asked for an appointment, and I haven't heard any response back on that. So if there's some way the county could publish its guidelines for how we make appointments, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cheek. I believe that that information is on our website. I believe Ms. Rollins had put that information out on the website, the numbers to call and the process to go forward to making your appointment. Are there any more public comments? If there are no more public comments, we'd close the public comments section at this time. Mr. Phelps, if you're on the line, could we... Do we have a report from the emergency services during the pandemic, Mr. Phelps?
Yes, sir, we do. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Surrey County, good evening. Chairman of the Board, Board Members, Rollins, Surrey County. Surrey County currently has 144 positive cases, 10 hospitalizations, and five deaths. We continue to recommend that all follow the CDC guidelines that have been put in place to prevent the spread of the virus. Emergency management and the Crater Health District will be offering a drive-through COVID-19 testing this Saturday, November 7th, and Saturday, November 12th. The testing will begin at 10:00 a.m. and run until 11:30 a.m. You know, to be at the Surrey County Emergency Operations Center located at 1239 Colonial Trail West, Dendron, Virginia. Surrey citizens can pre-register by calling 804-862-8989. All this information has been put on the county website as well as the county Facebook page. We recently utilized some of the CARES funding to purchase a mobile LED toble signboard to help us get our message out to the community regarding up-and-coming testing. If you're driving up Route 10, we put that board in place today, so you'll see a sign that displays the information about the testing coming up this weekend. And I'd like to thank the staff at Farmers United for their assistance in the delivery of this large piece of equipment. We have two testings that will occur in the month of December, and the dates are to be determined, I should know something, by mid-November on those dates. November 19th, there will be a flu shot clinic that we'll be offering here at the Surrey County Emergency Operations Center. It'll be from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. The testing is for citizens and employees of Surrey County. As you know, Wire, from the past that I've mentioned, I sit on the regional vaccination planning team, in which we are currently fine-tuning the strategies and tactics of providing a multi-cared approach to administering the vaccination to first responders, the essential personnel, and the citizens of Surrey County. At this time, it hasn't been determined when that vaccination will be ready, but what we're doing is making sure that we have all the logistics in place for when that time does come so we can get those vaccinations out to everyone in a timely manner. Other than that, that is all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Board members, are there any comments that you have at this time? We'll call you in order. Mr. Drury, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one, one brief comment. And it was mentioned in the consent items, the, basically, we're accepting the property from Mr. Ron Perry. And I, that property is in the district I represent, and it's at the corner of Holly Bush and Route 31, as board members know. And, and I talked to Mr. Perry and told him it would be coming up this evening, and I thought the board would approve it. And he's very excited about the opportunity he's had to give this property to Surrey. Looking forward to seeing what we will do with it. And I don't know if Ms. Rollins has got any comments to make about that, but I hope we will acknowledge and thank Mr. Perry and Mr. Rollins.
Mr. Drury, the comment that I will make, as you mentioned that, is that we have utilized the CARES Act, have purchased the actual, excuse me, have submitted the purchase for the sign to go at Holly Bush Route 31, in addition to a second sign, certain board members, to go in front of the government center to convey messages to the community. Right now, our next step is to secure the brick mason to actually do the casing as the vendor is working on developing the sign. We did receive some samples, and that information has been returned to them, and hopefully we will have that in place by the end of December.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Ms. Little? Thank you, Mr. Drury. Ms. Little? You're muted, Ms. Little.
I was. I apologize. Just want to say that staff, I feel like, has been doing a very good job in keeping Surrey safe into our emergency group and all, and we're just thankful for their service.
Thank you, Ms. Little. Mr. Calhoun? Can't hear you, Mr. Calhoun.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Sorry. I just wanted to thank Ms. White and her staff for running the election and making it happen very smoothly this, early this week. I also like to thank the staff and, and the board in, you know, meeting all the resolutions and all the action items that were voted on. And just like to say, Surrey County, please keep, stay safe and, and have a great, great weekend.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun. I too like to say ditto to all the comments that the board members have made. I would like to commend staff on the hard work that they are putting in. I have more hands-on, and I know exactly what's going on. And it is, it is a great task that you're taking on to, to improve Surrey County and to keep Surrey County flowing in a positive direction. I also want to tip my hat to the registrar's office and the job that they did during this election. We were able to get results back from Surrey County early, so that showed the hard work and dedication of the staff of our registrar's office. We need to remember that we are in a pandemic. The virus is still very active, so let us take all necessary precautions. And I do commend the board for adopting the ordinance so that we can continue to meet virtually. It is a difference, it is somewhat of a strain as to not being in person, but we would like to put safety first. So I thank all the citizens of Surrey County for being patient with us as we handle the business in this virtual nature. So once again, I tip my head to staff and to the board members for working diligently with me as we continue to move Surrey County forward. If there's no other business to come to our attention tonight, we entertain a motion from the board to adjourn until our December the 3rd meeting at 7:00 a.m. year 2020.
Mr. Chair, this is Mr. Calhoun. I made that, I made that motion to move the, I mean, to end this meeting.
Have a motion to give a second, Mr. Drury?
Second.
Then properly move a second roll call vote, Ms. Chapman.
Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Motion is carried. We are adjourned until December the third, seven o'clock, 2020. God bless you all.
Same to you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, all. Thank you.
Good night.